What's the budget?
I didn't get a new PO. It was for stuff we cleaned out of our own stuff. I guess used it.
Thank you Pastor Ives for coming in.
Well, I thank you for today. I thank you for the men and women that are here that are committed to our village. And I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance. And I pray that you give us all a clear path towards you, a clear path towards following you as students and disciples. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I am the President and Speaker of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Can I have that picture right on the table?
No, we don't have to vote on that yet.
Okay.
Maker?
Yes.
Martha?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Here.
You have the July 15th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to a board.
Second?
Roll call please.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Martha?
Upstate.
Jones?
Here.
No.
Yes.
Paying attention.
Yeah.
I'm ready for the next.
Okay. You have the two bills list within the council packet. Are there any questions?
Question for Scott. Is that through that grant that you applied for, for the $12,000? For the turnout?
Turnout, no.
That was just something you budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
I budget 10 cents a year and something like this.
Good. That was the only question I had. If nobody has any others, pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martha?
Upstate.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
There's a notice of public hearing in your packet. The Hicksville Board of Zoning Appeals will hold a public hearing for an application for a conditional use permit on Wednesday, August 7th at 4:00 in the, at 108 North Main Street. The application submitted by Kevin and Vera Hunt is a request to operate a bed and breakfast from their dwelling located at 118 West Mistry. I would encourage anybody that has an interest in that to attend that meeting on August 7th. And let's see. I guess that's it. So we'll go on to the...
Is that the first one?
Boards and commissions. You have the minutes from the CRA council meeting held on 7/17. Don't think there's anybody here to give any details on that.
Well, I will say I've been working with them on a couple of things. So particularly the one request that's been commercial, there is some legislation that there's notice to the school and things that have to be done with the school board. And myself and Jerry Hayes and Taylor Klepper have been working on some things. I just talked to Taylor today, so.
That wouldn't surprise me because I didn't think we were doing commercial. I thought...
We're not doing industrial.
Residential.
Residential and commercial, but not industrial.
Okay.
So we wanted to be able to cover, and that may be, you know, it's covered by it, but I think the thought was like storefronts uptown. We wanted to be able to do those commercial and everything. But with the commercial, there's a little different rules as far as the process and approval from the school board and things like that. So we're trying to get some things around so that some of that information can be presented at the next school board meeting.
Thank you Troy for adding that. Any other questions about the CRA meeting? Okay. Mike Bailey put the nuisance board meeting minutes in the packet, and I think he did an excellent job on the notes of what our committee went over and what we discussed and gives you a good idea of what we're working on. And then we have the minutes from the park board. We have stuff here tonight representing the park board, but if anybody has any questions about those minutes, they can ask her now or ask her later. Are there any other boards and commissions that have anything they want to report? We'll go on to the council committee reports. Anybody want to report on their committee?
Personnel met the 17th of July. I think the minutes are in your packet. Three things we went over was offer solicitor Essex a two-year contract. He's been without a contract for two years.
A while.
So the vote was 3-0 to offer a two-year contract and raise his salary up to $19,600. Also, the committee voted to reduce the assistant clerk to part-time, effective first of the year.
Why?
Doesn't have enough work to keep her busy. Lack of work.
You don't think with the upcoming year, with the people that are possible retiring and changing, the changes that are going to be made on the council and everything, that things aren't going to move around, that she would come in very handy?
Put her back to full-time. But right now, doesn't warrant full-time. Trying to save money on the general.
I'm not in favor for that at all.
Well, whole council's going to vote on it.
Okay.
And then the last was, I guess we had four things. First responders, the pay will be the same as a farmer at 1209. Then also the insurance now, if you have a waiver, just an employee would get $2,500. But now we're going to do a tier system. Committee voted 3-0, set a four-tier, and one adult would receive $1,000, one adult and child would receive $1,500, two adults would receive $2,000, and the family plan, two adults and children would receive $2,500. So again, that was the committee voting 3-0 to forward it to the council for their approval. So we vote on these when Troy brings legislation, right?
Yeah, and the one to do, because Cheryl asked me to bring it right away, the one to do with the first responders is actually in the package. So since there's going to be somebody getting paid on that.
Cheryl, you had a response. Anything else?
With some of these decisions on looking at the Troy, you know, the clerk and everything, that's something you had talked about within the department. How you come up with bringing the assistant clerk to part-time? Do you have work for that?
We got advice from Cheryl. She's the one that's over that position, and she said there's just not enough work right now. So.
Yeah, it's part-time work season. I know, I saw like her last year, I know she was out helping Kent and some leads and other people. We talked about all that.
Yeah.
She feels it quite well.
Just first of all. You're going to have changes.
Just trying to save a little money.
She's knowledgeable enough to take on the changes.
Okay.
I appreciate the fact that she was willing to go outside and work when she was needed to do other things. I thought that was great that she was willing to do that. Not everybody who has a office job is willing to go outside and work in the street.
There's still not enough to do 40 hours a week, per week.
I understand that.
And there's times when maybe she can get additional hours if it's seasonal, you know, vacation, different things.
And during tax season.
Right. She's not salaried part-time kind of.
All right.
She could be smart.
Is there anything that you want to make a motion on or vote on right now? I mean, there isn't one that's...
Do we need legislation on any of this?
Um... Yeah, I think it probably needs it on...
Yeah.
On everything, yeah.
Yeah, even yours is done.
Yeah, with an ordinance and certainly the tiering of the insurance reimbursement would need to be because that's in, that's in there.
Is there insurance anywhere? Isn't that on ALBA?
It's an ordinance, right?
What's your question?
In tram committee?
Yeah, but shouldn't that be a policy?
I know.
Well, I couldn't.
Yeah, it's just policy.
It could have gone to either probably, because it is a benefit, I mean, it is an employee benefits, so personnel probably.
But the bottom line is, you know, we voted 3-0. Whole council can vote on it, air and a, and move on.
Sidewalk committee, anybody have anything?
Yeah, sidewalk committee met on July 24th. The nuisance board and your minutes, the last part of it talks about how they had some concerns on sidewalks throughout town to get them fixed. They wanted us to have a meeting to discuss that. We talked about sidewalks. Also, Mike Bailey presented us with a handout ahead of time about some ways to get some sidewalks done around town, but they're only allowed on certain streets. For instance, safe routes to school, you can apply for some sidewalks. We got to get it okay through the state and everything else. And we also talked about back in a couple of years ago, I think it's 2017, we talked about putting a monthly fee possibly on the water utility bill, and that would be help, I guess it'd help the village generate money to fix or repair sidewalks. I remember talking to Troy about that time quite a bit, and we had shot that down at that time due to concerns of liability. And also talked about responsibility for who would be paying it. Is it the people that only have sidewalks, people that only have a water meter, you know, apartments, trailer courts? Some of the trailer courts only have one water meter. So we talked a lot about different options of doing it. So we kind of had a few different ideas or ways to go about it, three choices. Then you guys said Holgate did something here recently. I wasn't able to find that article. You bring it. Okay. Holgate did something. I'll let Rodney say that after I read these. But the three choices was, and we'd like to bring that in front of council and to the public in case they want to come here and voice their opinion on one way or the other. The idea of generating the money for a monthly fee, the village would take over the responsibility of fixing them. We understand that you might not have a sidewalk, but our idea would be to generate money, fix the bad ones now, and then as we generate more money in the future, add sidewalks throughout town and not at the cost of the resident. So I know there's people that don't have sidewalks. We'd like to have them around town, down by the hospital, down towards the school, in the park, around the park. It'd be nice to do that, and that was one way of thinking about getting money to do it. So our three choices were to leave it alone, possibly changing the timeframe. Right now, our zoning inspector sends a letter out giving you a year to fix your sidewalks, about sending those letters out sooner, maybe in March or April, give the resident six months to fix them, and if they're not fixed within the six months instead of a year, the bills would fix them, and then they would add that to the taxes of the resident. The other option was add the monthly fee to each address, and it would be each address. So if you, like, the trailer court, let's just say for example, El Grande, every property, every lot would have a $3 bill. It wouldn't be a $3 bill just for the one water meter. The other one was, somebody had said back in the mid-'80s, before my time, knowing anything, they said in the mid-'80s, at one time, they used to go by quadrant. They would pick a quadrant. If you lived in that quadrant, they'd figure out how many sidewalks need repaired. And let's just say, for instance, there was $15,000 of repairing quadrant one, and you lived in that area, even if you didn't need to get yours fixed, and there's 150 addresses, they'd divide that amongst evenly amongst every house or every property. So everyone would pay the same fee. So that was another choice. And then they had said, and Holgate was doing something here recently too, and it was in the finance paper, but I wasn't able to read that. So what was their idea?
It was quite lengthy, but I'll just give you the basics. They're doing a section. They put a $10,000 limit on phase two of their project and selected this two different streets, the entire length of the streets. One street is $5200, the other street is $4,488. Money from the tree trimming will come from the tree fund. Property owners are given the option of either paying for the work upfront or by assessment over three years. That's how this town is handling that.
Okay.
Possibly, I'll give this to Cheryl. I mean, there's more stuff in here, but maybe Cheryl can copy this and put it in our mail or our next packet or something.
I know it still kind of goes back to the concern about liability and...
Yeah, I mean, the taking them over is a major liability issue, and I know they do that someplace, but it's hard for a guy like me to swallow the potential liability.
I read a thing on that, and I can't remember what they called it. There's two forms of the municipal governments are...
Immune?
Immune to...
Yeah. It depends on whether or not they consider in government functions or proprietary functions. And then within the government functions, there's another, a long list of things, but I don't think if we took those over, we would be immune from some of the things that we now currently are.
General well-being is not covered?
No, it's not. I have to study a little more.
Do it this way. They do it over, they don't?
No, they got the same problem. I set meetings with the same, same conversation, same, same ideas, same two people, you know, two or three people over here saying, "Take them all over and do them," two or three people over here, you know, and I think, you know, same thing. What do the people want or whatever? Just keeps going to meeting to meeting, and there's never, I mean, it's the same thing. It's just on a larger scale. They got more sidewalks, obviously, but it's the same thing, you know? Do the people have the wherewithal? I mean, that's, that's what a lot of the people got down to is, do the citizens, do they want it done? And how do you figure out whether or not they do or they don't? That's kind of the last, the last meeting I set in there.
Well, hopefully, the general populace of our community and our news tribune and our president will explicitly outline the options that Mr. Bassett has given us, and we can get some input from the people. I know every time we ask for input, where there's, I get plenty when I walk into a coffee shop, but I don't get any that gets to here, and we need to know what the people want. And, I mean, I'm good with anything that you read off. I can live with anything you read off. We need to know what everybody else wants.
Well, and to head it off at the past, there's no problem with assessing people that don't have sidewalks or anything like that, because the sidewalks are available for everybody's use, so there's a general use. So just because you don't have a side, I mean, there's no constitutional problems or anything with the quadrant format or putting the $3 fee on. I mean, it's, it's for the betterment of the community if people use sidewalks, you know, that, just not the sidewalk that's in front of their house or another sidewalk.
And one other thing about that, where there aren't sidewalks, if we do the $3 thing, we're going to put sidewalks. We're going to continue the sidewalk onto the hospital, continue the sidewalk on like to El Grande and on to Haver and Haver Drive, and there'll be sidewalks put where there are none now if we have the fund that we were talking about. So.
And it's not going to all get done in one year or anything like that. I mean, I just think it'd be easier for somebody to swallow the monthly $3 fee than what it would be to get a letter in the mail saying, "You got to replace your sidewalks," and it's going to cost you a couple thousand dollars. I think it'd be a lot easier for the people to offset that.
Well, and if you go in like that, you probably do them like, you know, maybe like the police department, you know, budges vehicles or whatever. You don't replace them all in one year. You got a plan, and, or, you know, or Kent's vehicles he has. Same with sidewalks, we know, you know, probably by the time we get them all done, we're going to flip back over and start having ones to repair again.
Cheryl, would that be a legal contingency? I know things have changed about contingencies since, since I was in your office. Does every sidewalk contingency add up near the year?
That's all I had, so. And thank Kent for spending the time he did on researching all that, that history before you brought to us. Thank you for that, Kent.
Real quick, I think, we've talked about this many times in the past, as I've been on council, you know, and it's tough. It's a tough decision. I want to thank the people that have gone out and got the letter and have replaced their sidewalks.
Yes.
But they might have had it. You know, they put some money to repair their sidewalks, replace and everything, and that's a good thing for them and the community, so I want to thank them to do that. But we need input on this, so.
We need lots of input.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports?
No, the only thing I want to bring up, well, Scott will probably bring it up when it is, so other than that, Scott.
Are there any other committees that want to report on anything?
Water sewer committee are reading this Wednesday, 3:00 at the water plant, we're going to that. And we actually, a little while back, before the sanitary plant, just checked in on things, saw some things that need addressed, and we're going to work with Jeff and Kent and staff down there, and then, as I said, go through the, Jesse at the water treatment, and I would be good to her there, so.
Sounds good.
And thank you, Mayor, for sending us that EPA report.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I didn't want to kill a tree.
15 pages.
So I thought, well, you can be totally responsible to read it yourself if you want to. Thank you. Okay. If there are no other committee reports, we'll go on to the administrators' report.
Just a couple of dates to pass on, and then depending on how you wanted to handle that other.
I don't see it.
That's up to you.
Kent's report or not?
Just next Monday, if you need me and Cheryl, we will be gone. And I'm going to be gone part of the 20th, and I'll be out of town all day the 22nd. So if you get any browses that day, call somebody else. I mean, they're all business-related, so it's not like running off. And I don't really have anything else, other than whenever the mayor wants to handle a situation.
The outside of the building looks really nice, Kent.
Well, yeah, they got wrapped up. Just get the AC put in, get Cheryl cooled down a little bit.
Nice to see the back door area, roof area and stuff all right here and fixed up and looking nice. Temporary fix to the building, New City Hall, I presume?
Well, they got everything caulked and blocked. I mean, that doesn't mean when they did it, it's just to keep the water mold out.
It looks good. Okay, we are on to the sanitary report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2019-09, a second reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. Any questions? Ask Cheryl. Next is ordinance 2019-11, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance of the village of Hicksville declaring it unlawful to mow, rake, or otherwise place fallen tree leaves or grass clippings or similar items on the street pavement or into the gutter of any public street and declaring an emergency. Can or can't be, the emergency being we're going to be out of grass season pretty soon.
Actually, we suspend rules.
I'll second that.
Baker?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
I have a question. I read this earlier today, but who's going to do the citations?
Please.
The police are going to do that.
There was, I think there was a question last meeting on Uber site.
That's why I changed it. It's in there. I added a section that says, "The owner and/or the occupant of the property shall be responsible for any violation of the provisions set forth in A and B, even if said acts were committed by another performing work on their behalf."
And the police are going to do the citations.
Well, in that way, and we had some discussions about warnings for first offenses and stuff, and I think, like a lot of offenses, we leave that up to the police discretion, and I think it's presumed that, you know, when it's new and little violations or whatever, they probably would give them a warning, and they have the system to where they make a report or whatever, and then if they get called back out to an address, somebody looks it up and says, "Oh, we were out here three weeks ago, and patrolman so-and-so gave them a warning. We're citing them this time." Or, but we didn't want to put that in there just in case there's somebody that's, for lack of a better term, just being a jerk and mowing their 12-inch high grass and blowing it purposely all out into the gutter of the street. We wanted them to be able to cite him if they thought it was kind of an egregious violation. And so that's why that was left that way. So second, third readings of ordinance 2019-11 by caption only, an ordinance of the village of Hicksville declaring it unlawful to mow, rake, or otherwise place fallen tree leaves or grass clippings or similar items on the street pavement or into the gutter of any public street and declaring an emergency.
So move. Sorry.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
And then I got first reading in ordinance 2019-12, an ordinance creating new first responder positions for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, emergency of which is they're going to need to start getting paid pretty soon.
I'm going to suspend rule. Second.
Baker?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Second, third readings of ordinance 2019-12 by caption only, an ordinance creating new first responder positions for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
And the Hoos trucking thing, I've got the documents that I need finished. I actually left a message for Rodney today because I wanted to email them to him so that he could look at them, and so I would anticipate in the next few days or so hearing back from him and letting him review the documents and stuff and trying to wrap that up, so.
Troy, we have a company that we gave a loan to over a year ago, and the construction has started in that time, and...
A revolving loan?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the state pulled out because it wasn't happening, and we already gave our money a year ago. I sent a couple messages to Jerry Hayes asking, called the property owner to ask them...
Is that an email that you copied me on like late last week?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've never gotten those.
I was told today that Jerry's out of town this week for, I mean, I just called for him today to ask something. They said, "No, he's gone all week," and whatever, so we won't get any response, I presume, from him this week, but I can look into it and see what's up.
I just thought it would be better for Jerry to call them than me call them, because Jerry could talk to them about some options perhaps...
Right.
...on our behalf.
Well, I got other things for him, so if I talk to him before you do or whatever, I'll mention it.
I think we need to follow up with that.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions for Troy or anything that they need him to look into? All right, we'll go into the department heads. Martha?
So we have began to advertise for hiring a full-time officer to replace Tyler Maynard. That should be starting this week in the local papers. We just put something out on Facebook this evening. Other thing is, I was handed a contract by the Finance County Sheriff's Office for licensing of software that deals with Zerker, which is our database system. Evidently, we have the personnel in Zerker where, that we can use it as personnel to attach all of our personnel, the police department, fill in all their information. We're going to attach our documents to it, training documents to their stuff. I can use it to select the permissions to use Zerker. Evidently, we had it, and nobody realized that we had it. So it sounds like we may have gotten it for free when they did Zerker, when they installed Zerker, and then some of the stuff was added after they went live with Zerker. So it's an additional $280 per year for the licensing agreement. So that is added, that would be added on to, I think it's $1370 that we pay at the beginning of each year, calendar year. And then plus, I think the contract read it was a 5% increase on that too, on that normal amount, if I read that contract right. But I have a copy of that, if you guys want to look at that, so you understand it. So in my understanding, that would not, that would not be paid until the beginning of the calendar year, or when we go to make that payment in 2020. the calendar year, or when we go to make that payment in 2020. For the month of July, I guess, we had 386 calls for service and we worked 233 cases.
Anybody have any questions?
Busy, busy.
Is that up from last month?
Uh, I didn't look what we had.
I think it's down, isn't it?
It might be down a little bit. I know we're, when I looked at the, just for the calls for service from last year up
until, I just did talk somewhere, where did I do that? The Rotary Club. I think we were 500 calls for service above at that time last year than what we are this year, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
What'd you get?
Scott?
In fact, you should have found the runs from the first half of the year. We're at 234. In July, we had 32 runs, 23 of those were EMS. Any questions on any of that? Bruce Silkott is asked to come back as a volunteer EMT. I spoke with all the members and they don't have a problem with it. Wanting a recommendation from the mayor, bring him back. Cheryl, did you look and see if it was pending?
Yeah, it's ever since.
Physical and drug screen.
You have to meet it?
Yes.
I would recommend bringing Bruce Silkott back to the EMS department, having the physical drug screen background check.
I'll make that motion for Bruce Silkott, for the mayor.
Oh, second.
Will call, please.
Baker?
No.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you. The first responders have completed their class, all passed their class, they're in the testing phase now with national registry. There will be two of them tested this week. So hopefully all six pass and that'll bring us up six more. Any other questions?
We appreciate their willingness to take that extra training and do that and stop out.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Thanks.
Staff, hard for.
All I have to talk about is that leak that we have in the pool, so we're filling it every night. The inspector said it's probably going to be about three weeks out, which means the pool's going to be closed, but at least we'll know where the leak is and get it fixed for next year.
You know that the daily attendance is now stopped for the lady in the later in the summer, I know it always goes down, and some of us were talking that, you know, might be worthwhile to close early?
I don't, I don't know that, okay, so this is just my personal opinion. So I don't know that it would be advantageous, it would be for us financially, probably, but for the kids, probably not, because there are certain, there are certain clients of the pool that that is a good, safe place for them to be in the summer. And so I'm thinking, you know, let's weigh it easier for them to stay out of trouble when they're being, you know, watched and monitored by lifeguards than not. And that's just my own personal opinion. I don't know about attendance, I do know that they always do their swim lessons. They just finished up their second week of public school lessons, plus the guards, I mean, that's part of the perk of being a guard, is they get to use the pool to do private swim lessons to kind of make up for, you know, that minimum wage that they make. So that's another benefit for some community members. Can't tell you as far, I could talk to the guards, I didn't, I wasn't expecting that question, but...
Well, I just curious. I mean, I can go down and ask the reference too.
Yeah.
Know they write it down daily. Everything else going well?
As far as I know, yep.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we are ready to go on to the fiscal officers' report.
I have the fund status.
Is there anything, please may, about the fund status that has any concerns due? No, okay.
I have some for the park real quick.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I'm not sure, I know the minutes were probably done ahead of time, but, and maybe chief knows something about this, but the camera system down the park, they had some, a kid vandalized the lock on the restroom building down there, and they got them on camera, and I'm not sure if they're able to locate or not.
Yeah, I think they're working on it, I don't know what the outcome is yet. I know they have that, I'm not so sure if they're working on that.
Okay.
I know they talked to somebody, I don't know if that was completely involved or not.
Okay.
They're working on it Friday.
Okay. Well, I know who it is. And we told them what it was, they're just going to try to locate them.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if they have, so, I know they talked to somebody last week.
That's what it was, yeah.
So...
Thank you. Okay, Cheryl?
And my collections report, the income tax utilities, mayor's court, police department. And then today I received the franchise fee payment, and it's for the second quarter. And also you have the taxes that are coming in next year, where is it? Right here. And I didn't put it to vote yet, and I don't even have all the blanks filled in because I only got it in today's mail, but it's just a little more than last year, not much, $2,200 total for all the letters.
For usually there's another side to this for local one or whatever? I mean, there used to be another letter that came with this too.
No, just that.
All right.
And the back-to-school breakfast, if you're going to go, make sure you let me know so you can get your name on the list and I can pay your fee. Councilman. You going? I mean, a blank stare.
I'm going for the school, you ought to pay for me, so.
Okay.
I'll have to ask my boss.
Um, it's at 7:30 in the morning, so that's real early.
It's not early.
Try to look for some people. Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Cheryl?
About to park with the dog.
We will go on. Kent's going to be able to explain this a lot better than I can regarding the downtown CDBG project that we had some meetings with everyone here who's in the EPA. And I don't have any of those, and I can't be driving with downtown CDBG here. But they don't, they have, we had public meetings for downtown businesses coming, and I include the minutes from those in your packets when we had them. And the Mommy Valley Planning chose three downtown businesses. And the grant is a new type of grant, so we really didn't know all the details, they were just kind of flying by the seat of their pants as it went along. The bill, the administrative fees were expected to come out of the grant fund, so there was not supposed to be any money that we knew of in the beginning coming from the village. It was just supposed to benefit the downtown businesses to help them, upgrade them, to preserve them. And so Kent found out just recently that there's a $5,000 administrative fee for this process, and...
Per application or for every general, oh, blanket?
The blanket, I was...
For the application, all three.
So I will let Kent give you the details. He's been working on it for me, which I really appreciate because I know you didn't want the headache.
He does all the time. Anyway. Well, you kind of explained it. In a nutshell, Mommy Valley had reduced the amount of administrative fees that satisfy the state, so that's why we're in the boat we're in now. Basically, they're asking us to get with Pogomeyer on a $5,000 contract to actually do the applications on behalf of these three businesses. They would submit them, Mommy Valley Planning then would submit all the applications, and from that point on, then the fees coming out of their share of that grant. So I guess it boils down to, do you want to pay $5,000?
What do we pay Mommy Valley for?
In the, in the, in the normal CDBG area, and I'm making numbers up here, we'll just be simpler. Say the county gets $100,000 through the state to divvy up amongst entities. Mommy Valley Planning gets a percent of that to do all the administrative stuff.
Right.
So let's just say that's $20,000.
So we pay them every year?
I think what this question is, is why do we pay them administrative fee, a couple thousand dollars every year to take care of our revolving loan fund stuff?
Yeah, I don't know what all, what we pay them goes to. I mean, I...
We pay them like $10, $12,000 a year?
That's not Mommy Valley. That's...
Yeah, economic development.
Mommy Valley, we get them money also.
Yeah, that's a couple thousand dollars a year to administer our revolving, is it $2,000?
That's Dennis.
To administer our revolving loan contracts and agreements when we loan money out, that's what Mommy Valley Planning is running for.
So in, in the normal scheme of things, yeah, we never pay anything, everything paid out of the administrative. Well, in this particular case, that can't happen.
And I, I talked to Kent about just asking the businesses, they would take care of that.
One of my three.
And he looked up, found out we cannot do that.
We have, we have to, well, we can assess them. I mean, that's an option, I'm not saying...
You can collect it.
I mean, but, no, because all this is going to end up running through the village, so it's a trial and end up getting involved once they send me these easy templates, right? And they're still working stuff out amongst themselves on who's doing what. Two of the attachments she sent, one was 140 pages and one's 130. Sorry, I'm not reading too, plus they're upside down. That is a may. To keep it moving, it boils down, we want to pay five grand to help these businesses maybe get funding.
There's not a guarantee.
No, because the application, say it was over and done with today, Mommy Valley submitted it, we go in the pot with every community in the state of Ohio, so we're competing against Cleveland, Markson, you know, whoever. So there's no guarantee that the business...
Cleveland and Markson are the two big ones.
Well, it's kind of using the spectrum there. So it's a competitive, and, so yeah, if the businesses don't get it, yeah, we're out the five grand. So I guess it boils down to, do you want to...
Can I ask who the three businesses are, is that confidential?
No, I'd say at this point, they're all public.
I'd say they're public.
I don't think I printed them out.
Collins?
Collins.
Thank you for welcoming.
Yeah. And then Bridle Village, and then the, call it the empty haven of furniture building, the people that bought that.
New ones.
They've got to turn it into some stuff. I mean, there's a chance they could get $250,000 between the three of them. But, yeah, there you go.
No, I didn't have anything against choices.
Now, Mommy Valley Planning, whatever criteria they used, pick these three, I think there was nine or 10 submitted, so I don't know how that process worked either. I wasn't involved with anything.
I heard information.
I think there's...
Yeah, we had a lot of interest downtown.
I mean, I've got the list back in the office, I just didn't bring it. So I, number one, I ask Cheryl if we can have money laying around. My, and I'll give Cheryl what I passed on to the mayor, you can take it for what it's worth, because it's ultimately your call. Someone make it sound like we're getting the $250,000, we're not. We're spending $5,000 in the hopes these three businesses get it. And I said it could look like we're using public money for private enterprise to benefit, although if these businesses survive, it helps the village in the long run, I mean, I'd get that point. If we don't pay it, then there probably won't be an application.
How much money do these businesses get?
The number I keep here is around 250 total possible.
Do they have to split that before the real?
Yeah, and I think each one, I didn't print all that stuff out either, was asking for varying amounts, but it's, the CDBG grant itself is up to 250 divided amongst three, so it could be 60%, 20%, 10%, depending on their need.
Is it true, it seems like I was told that Hicksville's the only one in northwest Ohio that applied?
I have no idea on that.
Was it like this the last time they did this?
No.
I don't remember, nothing like this.
This is totally not...
No, this is...
They had to match.
This is a totally new...
They had to match the money, right?
No, every year when I go through the regular CDBG, you guys never know a thing about it. Well, no, I'm just saying.
He's referring to our other downtown rehab that we did.
Yeah, that I don't remember, because that's right, when I took over, it was already imploded. That was in 2000.
It was like a 2575 squad, but it was still matching.
Sure, so, I thought it was somewhere like that.
This is total free money.
And, or if they decide they would pony some up that would improve their score, that's a big business too. So I, but anyway.
We're trying to get things cleaned up around town, and I think we initiated in the meeting. I feel we should go ahead and spend the $5,000.
I think that if we did, we would qualify for that.
It's better, yeah.
I mean, I think Cheryl disagrees, but you know, because she doesn't, it could be spent for that, but, or we can't give our money away or whatever, but we may have to give her $250,000.
Or would you take the $5,000 out of Cheryl?
I wouldn't.
No, I mean, if we vote to spend the $5,000...
Wherever you guys tell me to.
You've got to come up with the area before you decide.
Troy, that would be your opinion on, what do you...
You can use it for other...
revolving loans.
Yeah, you can use it for other, other purposes, other than district loans to things. We've looked at that before, I'd have to get out and look at the...
We have.
Yeah, we looked at it.
That was a grant for new business and updating their companies and buying equipment, everything.
What makes you think it can't be done, revolving loan?
It's a slippery slope when you take money that is for a certain purpose and you start getting creative. I don't like that. It's, the revolving loan fund is supposed to be for revolving loans, in my opinion. And so, once you start saying, "Well, we can do this and we can do that," that's not good. I don't like that.
Especially with loans.
The guy like me is going to say, "We already did it, we did it before."
You what?
That's the slippery slope.
Mm-hmm.
So, well, we did it for somebody before. So I did, and then the last time we did it, as you recall, there was some concern that if you had too much money in your revolving loan account, the state was going to come back and, with their handout, take it back, so everybody was kind of of the opinion statewide, well, might as well spend it if they're going to come get it. Particularly getting loans out, because then it's going to get paid back to us later and it'll be past the point that they yanked back too much or whatever, that was the compensation at least when it was done, but it is, and it's not just Hicksville, it's regularly used other places across the state for stuff that wouldn't be strict revolving loan.
I respect your opinion, Cheryl, because I understand how you're going.
Right.
And I appreciate the fact that you're voting for it.
I'll make a motion that we spend the $5,000 for this grant and take it out of revolving loan.
See, for... Whether it passes or not, we're out five grand, right?
Yeah.
That's the thing that scares me.
Would the businesses be willing to throw $700, $1,600, $1,700 each, knowing that they might not get anything out of it? No? Why should we? I mean, our general funding, see where our funding is at, our general funding, we just have an extra $5,000 to throw at something we might not have anything to show for?
If we don't put that money in...
Well, what if I take that $5,000 and, you know, assess them, the three businesses if they want to have a shot at it?
I'd be fine with that.
I'd rather be recompensating, get her $5,000 back than be out $5,000. And it's going to benefit them more than us.
So if we take it, then you can ask them.
I was going to call them today and... I was gonna call them today and ask them if they'd be willing to share the cost of that $5,000, and then get to them.
Well, you talked about if they, if they would just pay it to Pogomire.
That's... Close the timeline, we have to move on this. Last week. I would not have voted on it.
I mean, the longer this goes, the longer the application is not getting submitted.
Well, and if they were, they were approached, you could also, you said they may get varying degrees of money, you know? I guess that's only, if they got money, it'd be easy to say, hey, you get, you pay whatever percentage of the total money you got, but if they get nothing, how do you, you know, then you break it down evenly?
Yeah. Whereas if it's five, you know, $5,000, one company can get 50% of it, and the other two are getting 25%.
Yeah, you're gonna be like, well, why should I get the same amount?
1250, 1250, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I don't know. I realize that the downtown business block is vital to a community, but, my God, we do a lot for that block. We shovel our snow, clean our parking. One business down here keeps all the vans parked there, so nobody else can. Oh, man.
Ron, you made a motion, is that correct?
But I'm not sure about how to fund it. You know, it's been a lot of ideas. I think we somehow should come up with it. It'll probably go down, but Kent said you need it yesterday.
Yeah, well, the longer you...
So how are we gonna fund it?
They're gonna pay the money back to us. That's my question.
I'd vote yes if that's the situation, but I wouldn't do it otherwise.
I didn't hear...
If they, if they agree to... Three businesses would agree to reimburse the difference, split up evenly amongst the three.
Then I wouldn't have a problem.
I'd go for that, but I wouldn't go there.
I won't go the other way.
Yep.
So I could make my motion...
Yep, so long as they agree.
And they agree to assess the $5,000 split, I'll make that motion that way.
I'll second that.
The town is reimbursed for it.
Troy, is there papers that I may have signed regarding that, when I talked to you about it?
Yeah, if they agreed to it or whatever, yeah, sure, you have to say. They agreed, yeah. I mean, there's not gonna be anything fancy or anything, but, yeah.
Who is the second?
Mary.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bridgewater?
Yes.
Everly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
I'm still just a little confused.
On if they reimburse us?
It's too late to be confused.
But no, so I don't sign anything till, you know...
They agree to...
Okay.
Don't sign anything until she's got three signed agreements. So this grant money, they get 100% of it, they don't have to match.
Well, no, I...
So it's a lot better than what they had before.
Their application looks better, and they're adding something to the pot that they're, their own, but...
Yep, yep. It's a win-win. If it, if it, if it grants.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say we'd be... Okay. So, um, Kent, is that the thing that you wanted me to talk about tonight? You had...
Yeah.
Was there anything else you wanted to bring up?
Not at this point, no. That was Paul.
Just a little heads up. Ron Jones went to a beautification committee lady here, and is that the day that we discussed the rain garden?
Yes.
And its condition, and I will admit that I was the one hundred percent for doing the rain garden, so we could use it as a demonstration rain garden to show people how to get their water out of the sewers and poking into the ground. We planted native plants to Ohio based on soil and water and different people in defiance for our demonstration rain garden, and it just became a mess, totally out of control. We're trying to cut things back and take care of it, but the beautification committee, I think, would like to just fill the whole thing in. And I just mentioned that since that was a project of council, I think we needed to ask council if that's okay to do. So if you have any, if you want to discuss it tonight, that's fine, and if you don't...
You're gonna leave the sidewalk and bench and stuff there, correct?
Yeah, I would think so.
Did we have so many years, did we get grant money for that, did we?
Yeah.
Did we have so many years, we had to maintain that and keep it as that without just shutting it down early?
Um, no, I don't think so.
I didn't say we close it down early, we then, we gotta pay them back, so we didn't maintain it.
It was the soil and water, right?
Yeah, and stuff from the city of defiance, or Jen.
Steph.
Steph or Jen that works for the city of defiance.
Oh, Jen English.
Jen English, yeah. Um, she helped with that, she helped us with it, and just different people, so, um... Yeah, I would, and they said the beautification committee thought maybe the signage that's there explaining the rain garden could be some other place in the county, we can give that back to them, and they could use it in another place in the county, so it wouldn't go to waste, so, anyway, I guess so.
Is there any way to sell that lot? I mean, it's a nice building lot, so you can never, so and that's what this county project, where they go in there and tear these houses down. You can't resell the lots to people who want to build a nice home there or start a home or something.
The commissioners gave it to us to use as a public space.
No running water?
There'd be access to water.
Yeah, there could be, but there's not.
What money you wanna spend? Well, no, that'd be sarcastic, that gives me, how much money you wanna spend? Get another electric service.
The motion about filling it in, we just want...
If you wanna put it on the table and we can just decide tonight that if that's...
Well, unless...
That you're okay with that, if the beautification wants to...
Unless we volunteer to help pull the weeds, it would be a lot of work.
Did you guys end up pulling out the trees and stuff around that?
We haven't been back down since, 'cause nobody told us what they wanted.
I thought so.
Isn't there enough hump there to fill it? I thought it was kind of banked to that thing.
Well, you don't wanna get rid of all those native bushes.
Yeah, all that junk's gotta come out of there.
But you kind of hear a complaint, he's enjoying it differently. I mean, we're taking care of it. Kent, we've probably talked to someone...
I don't think they are taking care of it. I don't think they are taking care of it, Diane. And I thought Kent said you could give us the manpower to get them...
Well, give them out of the back, I mean, that's naming right, you don't, don't you bang?
That's the worst of it.
You can get a load of dirt from down there, out of that pile at the park, can't you?
Well, it's good stuff, we can use stuff from industrial drive. But, yeah, I mean, we can get rid of the big stuff.
At your leisure, take care of that. At your leisure, I said.
Might be...
Do it between snowstorms, huh?
That might be on the list for next...
Well, that matters, doesn't matter at all. So, anyway...
You wanna go out on?
If you want to, otherwise...
I'll make the motion to fill in the hole. I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Bridgewater?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Sure.
Everly?
Sure.
Baker?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
I hope, I hope somebody learned something from that for the brief time that it was there.
I was hoping Jeff could be...
You can learn, I know what he learned, too.
I wonder so.
Are we hooked up, are the East House hooked up to that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's why they run to the pond. What was first, the pond? That's why it was a demonstration.
I don't think that's solid. Oh, when they first built it, that's all it did was pump up water.
Pulled water.
Yeah, it was a solid...
But the committee mentioned putting a gazebo there. Yeah, they gotta look real nice.
We talked about that, I'm gonna be on that committee.
We need manpower to take care of it. This would've been great if we would've had the manpower to take care of it, but it just got overgrown.
All right, so just make it a nice mowed lawn with that sidewalk and bench, put another, put a gazebo in the bench.
We talked about having a concrete pad with a gazebo there, this way, you don't have to worry about ADI compliance here or anything, no steps for anyone to walk up, and somebody can get in the shade and...
Nice little corner for somebody to bow.
I got voted in instead.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to bring up? Anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to bring up?
I'm not putting a gazebo on it.
I second that.
Um, I wanna just mention that the fair's coming up. For all of you council members, the senior center is always looking for people to help serve lunch. I might have even passed a message on to you from the senior center inviting you to go help serve lunch to the seniors.
What day is that?
Don't get me confused and make me sit down and eat.
You do get to serve food and then sit down and eat if you're a senior?
They would. Tell me now, you need to be here, you're old.
Oh. My... I think you're right.
It's the senior bad friends.
Yeah, he's the best, too.
You know, I, specific items at the fair you want to mention or anything? Or does anyone know of anything else that's coming up in the community that you wanna...
School's gonna be starting soon, you have to be walking to and from school, so be careful. Watch out for little kiddos darting across the road, and make sure they're safe.
Tools for Schools is August 13th to 14th on 104 Fountain Street. It's put on by the community center.
Tools for Schools is August 14th on Fountain...
13th and 14th.
13th and 14th.
On 104 Fountain Street.
104 Fountain Street. Oh, put on by the Hicksville Community Service Center.
And I know Hickory Creek's doing, on this coming Saturday, they have a school carnival. It's, come down, do games, and stuff, to win free school supplies. That's open to the public from 10 until 10 a.m. till noon. So grab it, fun way for the kids, and up hours, giving away free school supplies, so that'd be fun.
Motion adjourned.
Second, second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Sure.
Barth?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Bridgewater?
Certainly.
Everly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.